All right, let's call this meeting order on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Blair.
There.
Councilmember Richardson.
Rose.
Councilmember Crossman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Hess.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Minsky. Mayor DeFendo.
Here. Do you mean, uh, can we hear from the council?
Chief is out yet, she'll. Yeah, she's. Oh, that's right, she did, Eric. That's, excuse, excuse me. All right, can we get an agenda approval, please? Councilor S.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
There a second?
Second.
Thank me, Councilmember Smith. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in favor say nay? Carries. All right, moving on to special presentations, we have a city of Yelm recreations, recreation activities update. Lynn, please take it away.
Kathy should have the. Powerpoint if she wants to, if you'd like to pull that up.
Oh.
Thank you.
There my screen again.
Come on in.
Hello.
The meetings.
Yes, come on in.
It's quiet, it's a quiet meeting.
Just wait.
It's my. Perfect, thank you. Thank you all for inviting me to chat with you this evening. I'm really excited to share a little about our recreation activities. That's happening in the city of Yelm. Before we jump into that, parks. And recreation activities, our city functions that provide countless values to our citizens. And it can be very easy to take these benefits for granted. I just want to take a second to highlight some of the quality of life advantages that are often overlooked. There are five benefits of parks and recreation activities. You can go on to the next one. The first is that they provide the opportunity to be physically active. Providing appropriate park infrastructure and programming is a key component to, in a parks and recreations ability to improve the physical fitness of a community. They provide vital green space where people can go to improve their mood and invigorate themselves. One longitudinal longitudinal study, and you can see my sources down at the bottom there. Showed that individuals who move to greener areas have significance and long lasting health benefits. Even pass passive leisure activities like reading and meditation and contemplation improve mood, reduce stress. And enhance that sense of wellness. Parks provide true economic benefits. In by increasing property values of residential properties that are immediately adjacent to parks by as much as twenty percent of. The property's marginal value and having destination attractions and programming. Can attract tourist dollars to our area and we know how much, how important that is. Parks can conserve natural areas. And we're not going to say anything about the pocket gopher. And parks can improve the human condition of our citizens who experience barriers that can limit their opportunities. Our parks are public commons and are often the glue that brings and holds a community together. Yelm citizens love their parks because they bring joy and happiness. Parks and recreation, parks and recreation is a necessity in improving Yelm's quality of life. And by offering programming that's inexpensive to Yelm's residents, we can create a community that is inclusive to all. Next slide. We're going to go through a little bit about kind of my. Work till now. When I started in October, I wanted to introduce just a few events. And also daily reminding myself not to overdo it in the first couple of months, still learning. I wanted to take the last quarter of twenty twenty-two to get comfortable with my role, complete the projects that were already in the works. And really learn where I would be thriving here. So from October to December, you won't see a whole slew of new programming. We did bring back trick or treat at city hall, public works and public. Services and the public safety building and had a great group of kiddos come through. Next slide, we held the gingerbread contest and food drive with twenty-four entries and over four hundred pounds of food that were donated. Uh, next slide, we created a volunteer pool to work on events in the future. We added the next slide slowing snow and glow dance party and the cocoa trail to the Christmas in the park tree lighting next slide. And gave out a hundred cocoa cups in about twenty-five minutes. This was also where we provided free pictures with Santa, where we printed about a hundred and seventy-five pictures for the little ones. Next slide, we held Christmas in the park where local businesses and organizations came out to support the event by providing activities, games and crafts. While the school choirs performed holiday hits. Next slide, we also. Launched the winter solstice walk, which was even better received than I ever would have anticipated. If you were able to attend, you would have noticed a beautifully decorated Cochrane Park and about a hundred and fifty attendees walking the trail. This was my favorite event of twenty twenty-two and one that will be recreated next, next year or this year. Next slide. And then at the start of twenty twenty-three, we created a plan. I want our programming to be engaging, introduce people to our parks and be inclusive. Everything that we've done so far fits into one or more of these categories. We launched. The new, a new program that will last throughout the entire yield year with our parks passport, I think you can go to the next slide. Kids explore Yelm. Encourages kids to visit our parks, complete small challenges and earn stickers for their passports. Which I brought my passport here. These activities are free and the entire program runs on a very tight budget. We have issued seventeen passports. Our first sticker stop next slide was the groundhog hunt. These are just a few of the pictures that were posted on our social media. It was great hearing how much fun the kids had. And one mom even said it was her first time over at Cochrane, she didn't know that it had existed before then. And the biggest complaint that I got with the groundhog hunt was that the groundhogs weren't real.
Next year though.
Next, next year, next year. We launched our storytellers series with the heritage of Niskweli culture featuring Hanford McLeod. This session had about forty-five in attendance. And our next is scheduled for March fifteenth. With Jared Potter, who's going to talk about the secret behind the lenses. From the small screen to the silver screen, he's done work with big names like Netflix and the sci-fi channel and he lives right here in Yelm. Next slide. Our military, oh, one more side. Our military banner program is making a return and we're focused on building our relationships. With our military and veteran groups in the area. Keep an eye out for city of Yelm sponsored Armed Forces Day celebration and a Memorial Day service. We've taken over the administrative side of the work in determining if a creative district is the right move for Yelm. Next slide. These are all the ongoing projects that I wanted to highlight. Now what we've accomplished from January to now and what's coming up for the rest of twenty twenty-three and beyond. These are going to go by fast, Kathy. In January, we assisted with hosting Yelm's government town hall. Next slide held the first storyteller series, next slide supported the Yelm community schools and the planning and execution of the tornadoes.
Celebration.
It was there. There, I missed it. Community celebration. We hosted the groundhog hunt, a Galentine's Day brunch and hosted Olympia's chamber orchestra. Looking into the future, we have sticker stops planned for each month of twenty twenty-three. A pollinator Palooza, complete with a story trail and honey tasting. Armed forces and memorial day services, we're working to bring prairie days back and a parade. And we're hard at work with our police department to hold national, a national night out that. Won't be beat. We'll be inviting little ones back into our city buildings for trick or treating. Work with our military organization partners to host a Veterans Day event. Partner with the school and the Chamber of Commerce to plan Christmas in the park and the winter solstice walk. We're already starting the planning for Yelm's one hundred year celebration. Stay tuned for Yelm tenial or centennial. Fill up in the air.
Or their name too.
Or TBD. Please continue to recognize and support our efforts in improving the human condition and making Yelm a great place to live, work and play.
I do like Yelm tenial.
Sounds good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, any questions for Lynn? Councilmember Smith.
On the passports, what are the, what, does it go up to a certain age or can anybody?
I don't think anybody can. If you have, if you want to do the passport, Polly, I will issue.
No, but I didn't.
Lynn has one.
Okay, I was just curious. So you gave out seventeen about what were the ages.
The ages are the, yeah, littles, I would say under ten.
Okay. Councilmember Brooks.
Yes, I have a question about the passports also, are you modeling that after another city's successes?
I kind of took a few. A few cities, businesses, organizations who were doing similar things and then just kind of made it our own.
And it's a year long?
Yeah, it'll go to the end of the year and then at the end of the year, they can trade their book in. They'll get to keep their book. But we'll go through and we'll say, okay, you've got ten stickers you can pick from these prizes or you've got twenty stickers you can pick from these prizes. And just something to encourage engagement.
Super, thank you.
Any other questions? How big is your budget? Curious.
My budget for this program is. For the recreational activities for the full year is ten thousand. And currently with the programming that we've done and the participants that have been involved, we're running at about eighty cents a person.
Pretty cost effective. Lynn, you're doing a great job from what I've seen and.
Yeah.
For the presentation. Any other questions where she leaves? All right, moving on.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, do we have anyone signed up?
Do not, if any of them don't have any hands raised from the public.
Good, anyone here, one? Speak. All right, we will go on to item number five, consent agenda. We just have the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Yelm City Council meeting minutes. Motion to approve. Councilor S.
February fourteenth, the consent agenda.
Second. Saying my councilmember Blair. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? And carries. All right, moving on to new business, we have resolution number six two four. Hology for staff time spent redacting body camera footage, video footage. And I believe we have Chief Carlson to discuss.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, thank you. I'm here before you to go over a proposed motion to approve the methodology used to calculate the fee for staff time spent redacting body camera video recordings. For certain requesters as approved in resolution number sixteen, we're on January tenth, twenty twenty-three. And as you know, in two thousand twenty-two, the police department adopted a body worn camera. Program and with that, with their officers wearing the body cameras, there. A meeting data that's all subject to the Washington Act. Washington state has an established RCW. That allows law enforcement agencies to charge requesters non exempt. The reasonable cost of redacting videos, including the cost of redaction technology, we're not looking in that sixty-eight cents. Per minute, he that was adopted doesn't have anything about the redaction, redaction technology. It's based upon for actual staff time spent redacting body camera video recordings. To determine this cost, we looked at a two thousand seventeen stopwatch study that Seattle Police Department did for body worn video redaction cost study. It determines the amount of time it takes to redact such footage. And multiply that amount of time by the city of Yelm Police Department administrative staff salaries to determine the reasonable cost for such reductions. And in your packets, there's a copy of that Seattle study as well as a memorandum that kind of goes over what we come up with as far as the figures. The median rate for administrative staff at the police department. Coupled with the hour benefit rate. Comes up to forty dollars and ninety-one cents and it is an hourly rate. Broke that down by the minute comes out to sixty-eight minutes or sixty-eight cents per minute. By adopting this language in conjunction with the already adopted fee. That will be sixty-eight cents fee. I think what it does is it, it creates a little more transparency for us. It also reduces some liability. It holsters our fee structure to people that request how we came to that fee structure. So it, it takes the question out of it, so no one can challenge that based upon the information that we would provide with them with the Seattle study. I proposed this to the city attorney Brent Dilly, he agrees that it would be something we should use. I also have Beth Larson, our administrative assistant over at the police department, who is kind of in the trenches with this. And she deals with this on a daily basis and does a great job with doing that. And I think that she brought this to light in one of our most recent public disclosures. And felt that this isn't something very important for us to add to this, so that's why I'm here reading that. Do you have any questions for me?
Councilmember Blair.
Are we already charging for this regardless? This resolution.
Yes, but with this resolution, we provide information to show how we came to that fee. And I think it just eliminates problems for us going down the future.
I know it was, it was legislative action year or two ago that brought all this about, right? Me personally, I don't like it. I don't think we should charge that, but I know why they did it also, because it, it's not so much. Random person coming in and doing one, it's these. Businesses, they basically make a business out of this and they. Hold large. Data, I guess, pretty much, and then they just compile it all and sell it.
Yeah.
Are we able to do? Can we change it somehow to where we're not charging? Random resident? So, or does it have to be? Standard across the board?
So the non exempt individual would be somebody that this, the state of Washington has an RCW, this established exempt individuals that we cannot charge. Those are people that are associated with the case or their attorney, and there's a few other individuals in regards to that as well. But non exempt individuals is who we would charge. People that have no reason to want this case other than just to look at the case or to, to request it. And by charging, I, what I look at it as a benefit because we literally could spend days upon days upon days. Our, our administrative assistant working on redacting these videos to the point where this, we legitimately are going to have to hire somebody to do nothing but redaction. Unless we give some kind of restriction from folks that are just randomly looking for videos and they, they, they could get two days worth of videos and it's going to take. A week or more for our employee to redact it. So I think this would, the fee just kind of helps kind of weed that out. So people just don't have free rein on all of our video footage and causing our employees time to work on it to get it out as we're required to by. The Washington Public Records.
So just to be clear, whoever's directly involved in it. There is that from the, you know, we don't charge, I didn't know that, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, for motion, councilmember Smith.
Move to approve resolution number six two four approving the methodology. Calculate the fee for staff time spent redacting body camera video recordings for certain. Questionnaires.
Saying my councilmember Hess. Any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Who can carries? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Council. Moving on to item B, resolution number six three three, personnel policy revision. And I think we got Karen to discuss today.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have no name tag. Good evening, Council, how are you doing? A little bit of a voice issue this evening, but as presented, February seventh. Our personnel policy updates for you to review and I'm coming to council today to get approval to move. To accept six three three. For the city of Yelm personnel policy at revisions.
Karen, could you go over some of the changes that council had mixed with? Clarification regarding, I think, the hearing first piece of it.
Oh, sure. One of the questions was about concealed carry and open carry portion of this. We took out one sentence in our current policy that. Made it so that people can conceal carry with a permit. We just do not allow open carry in our facilities.
For RCW. Is there any questions from council? Councilor S.
And I just remember from the study session discussion that came up in reference to the dress code. I, I know that, I know that you wrote it generically, so that we don't. We don't run into an issue like three years from now, whatever the newest style is. How, what is the process for when? Somebody is going to be told, hey, that's inappropriate. And I, I'm just want, I just want to make sure that we have clear. Clarity on that, because that is something I believe we had questions about because what is considered appropriate for you may not be appropriate for. Somebody else.
We had talked about as a management team that when we were going to look at talking about somebody's. Dress code or how they were dressing, we would meet as a management team and discuss it to make sure that we are on the same page. That it applies to across the board and that we would come up with the decisions together.
As well as honoring all the contracts from labor unions and all that. To them, they have specific, certain, I guess, are they very similar though, the way that. Public resolution, there's a lot.
Similar, but nothing dress code policy wise. We're just giving it so we can be fair to all employees.
Okay, as I said, I just want to make sure that there was a process that's not just.
Yeah.
The administrator stands and goes. I don't like that, and somebody's going, looks pretty appropriate.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you for answering that.
Any other questions, councilmember Blair?
Obviously, my biggest issue was the firearm policy. If we're going to prohibit open carry, that needs to apply to the police as well, there shouldn't be any special treatment to anyone. So if we're going to have a no open carry policy, it needs to apply to anyone that walks in the door.
The RCW exempts certain, please balk on it.
Yeah, so the RCW, it's like, we, it's actually posted, it's been posted right on the front door there. So in nine forty-one, they changed the open carry to any government building that holds official meetings. So it was very specific to a building that hosts like council meetings. And it, the meeting doesn't have to be going on, it just, if there are meetings that are held there. I think it's RCW nine four one oh eight oh that's on the door there that covers that specifically, but it excludes. Law enforcement. It does mention that.
Passed last year.
Yeah. So it mentions it specifically in there excluding that piece, so. And again, that was, yeah, it was in twenty twenty-one that it was passed, correct, yeah.
I understand, like legislature is going to pass what they want. For me personally, I don't, I don't like the. There's rules for everyone else, but we're exempting certain government employees. Doesn't sit right for me.
Again, it's just limited.
I understand.
Okay.
I get it, it just still doesn't sit right.
And we did want to. I mean, that was a concern, but they can, the concealed carry ones as well for council that we would be able to allow for that. And that was a decision that we did come up with the management team that it didn't necessarily, we could have. Changed it to be opposite of that where they couldn't, but we did, you know, upholding. Myself, my own beliefs here as well as council's wishes for that, that I kind of got the gist of from them, so.
I mean, it's better than nothing, but like I said, it's, that's just where I'm at, I feel like the whole.
We've got to follow the RCW's.
It doesn't sit well.
Agreed. Any other question, again, that, that was just a small piece of this overall. Any other questions, comments? Look for a motion. Councilor S.
I move to approve resolution six thirty-three revising city of Yelm personnel policy.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Saying my councilmember Smith. All right, we'll do a roll call vote just in case, starting with councilmember Blair.
No.
Councilmember Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hess.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on. Thank you very much, Council, thank you. Moving on to item number C, Niskweli Construction LLC Public Works Contract. Cody, you have a name tag, hey. So before council day is in Niskweli Works, not Niskweli Construction LLC Public Works Contract. In the amount to not exceed three hundred and forty thousand dollars, this is for stage design and build. We put out an RFP in January, all the information's in your packet handbook, but just recap it. We sent it to three local agencies along with posting our website for the required time and broadcast it. The Squali Construction Company was the only one to respond to it. And they responded with an amount that was under the budget amount that council allocated of three hundred and fifty thousand. And we're excited to hopefully work with them, this will be the first time they're on the small works roster now. We had talked about, if you remember during our joint meeting last year, we had talked about them getting on a small works roster and so they're officially on there. So it's just a good timing and a great first product to work with and we're excited to work with them. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Councilor Blair.
What are we looking at?
Thousand dollars. So this will be a full stage, able to house bands, thirty school bands as well. Sound, lighting, electricity reroutes, new power brought in to put spider boxes in so we can have more lighting in the park as well. All in the spot where the current stage is, they'll demolish the current stage, rip up the concrete where they need to and then full design and build. So everything from.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we don't, we don't know this, so the, we don't know the full size yet, because they're doing design and build, but the requirements were listed, it has to be able to house a band of thirty people. Which school band is what we are thinking, it has to be professional, so a stage like, you know, Jimmy Buffett could come here and play and it would feel like that kind of stage. I say Jimmy Buffett from my. So we, we didn't put specifically Jimmy Buffett in there, but, but a professional band has to be able to come and play. We wanted lighting, that the band could perform with accurate lighting and we wanted speaker system that can be projected throughout the park. So all those things are included along with the power being rerouted or new power volume that needed, so. Councilmember Hess.
And it's just a recap from the public works meeting that we had about this. When they are doing this, you said they have their own architecture firm, which is going to, which is a plus. Those because they don't, they're able to work directly with it going, hey, how do we go about doing this, they're able to answer that question. You gave the full requirements, which you just described, a few of them. Are we going to be able to see what they're going to do prior to them getting started? And what do we as a council have reference to making, if we want something changed?
Yes, so the, the good news is like councilmember has said, is they have their own architectural firm, they help, you know, design the market. So they'll bring in some of those elements and stuff to this, which will be great. And then as design goes along, the public services committee, along with the parks committee and the arts commission will have some kind of inputs into the design to make sure it all looks well. The one thing we don't, I, I mean, I'll bring it to council too, and we get to a full design before we actually start construction, so you guys will see it as well. The one thing we don't want is too many chefs in the kitchen, because we don't want forty people giving all different ideas and it goes, Kim, you know, it gets all crazy. But we will have people giving inputs throughout the process and you guys will see a finished design before construction starts. Councilor Smith.
So you said you sent it out to three companies?
Three local firms.
Three local firms and then also posted it and the other two firms just didn't even respond.
Didn't respond at all, didn't send, they, they sent, I had an email back from one of them saying they'd look into it and then nothing came back.
Thank you.
Council Richardson.
I'm just making sure numbers match up here, maybe there's something I need to be educated on. The proposed motion that shows three hundred and forty thousand, but then the key facts and information, somebody shows a budget for three fifty?
The, the budget, how much you guys budget was three hundred and fifty, we only are going to spend three forty.
Okay.
Ten thousand left in the budget after.
I just want to make sure the request for the proposal was, I was like, okay, where's this ten thousand dollar difference? Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hess.
To continue discussion of the process showing design and all. I just, I just want to make sure that we also, will it be an opportunity for the community to at least be able to see it? So that we don't run into the same situation we ran into early last year of something being proposed and then all of a sudden. It goes completely, the majority of the community all of a sudden says, no, we don't like this. Are we gonna, is that gonna, will we have that kind of opportunity as well?
Yeah, I think it would make sense when design's finished to have a study session where it's, oh, we can talk about design at the study session, community can be involved if needed or they can see it during there and we can get feedback over some time. I think that is totally appropriate.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that that. That we have that capability for that oversight, thank you.
Councilmember Crossman.
So what's the timeline for this thing, because it sounds like there's a lot of. Discussion on design and then to build. What kind of timeline are we looking at, because that design portion could take a while. If we go back and forth and we have public, we have study session. And then go to actual build and build costs could change. What kind of timeline we, are we foreseeing with? All those components now.
It's a one year agreement from this day you guys sign it, so I believe I put March third on there, so it'll be a one year agreement, so by March third will have to be complete. Or we'd have to do an extension. What are we looking for?
What are we looking for, hoping um?
Yeah, so design will take place through the spring and summer, um and then construction will start right after the last event in August in the park, which I believe is Jazz Fest currently. So the construction would start in September and be ready for the next um season of events. Any other questions, comments?
Is that regarding the completion date? I'm just, I'm just reading that here, and I'm trying to find out whether it's June twentieth, twenty twenty four, the workshop be completed, is that just the, the deadline?
That's a deadline, yeah, but you see the contract, I think I have a contract expiration date of March.
Okay.
Remember the exact date, but it's the March of next year.
Good, the contract, okay, I gotcha.
Yeah. Councilmember Hess.
I'd like to move that we authorize Mayor Pento to sign a public contract with Skali Construction LLC. In the not to exceed the amount of three hundred and forty thousand dollars for design and build of new stage in Young City Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilor Smith. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Blair.
Uh, so what I'm, what I'm hearing, we're looking at like six months of design?
I don't think this, I don't think design will take six months, but I don't wanna go under construction during the middle of the summer when all the events are happening. So I think we'll be done with design probably in the middle of summer, but we won't have any ability, I wouldn't wanna go to construction at that point because you have all the events going in the park. So I would let all those events happen and then start construction in September once most of the events are finished.
Timeline, does this need to be voted on? Like, we have to say yes tonight kind of situation, or could we? Obviously, no matter what, we have to vote now, because the motion was made a second. But there was.
Effective date twenty eighth of September.
Yeah, that, because if we were to vote today. Um. My issue is, there was a couple people that brought up wanting to get some input from people. And we didn't really give any time to. Really get this out, like, hey, this is what we wanna do, and get input from. Residents. I feel like we kind of rushed to saying yes to this before, especially if there were some people that wanted to get some input prior.
What kind of input are you looking?
Whether the people wanted or not.
It's been discussed, hasn't it?
It has been discussed.
I mean.
With residents?
If meetings and, I, I don't know, I.
Yeah, there has been time to comment, again, this has been motion second, councilmember.
I was just gonna uh share that last year, we discussed it, uh was discussed uh during first quarter, second quarter. Uh, Director Colt had given updates that uh. The Saint Martins engineer students were working on getting a basic design, so we would have something to put out for asking for bids. And then when we went through the budgeting process, it was discussed and in the budget itself.
Okay.
So we've had almost a whole year's worth of discussion that I, that I can recall.
Yeah, as far as wanting to involve the public in design, I, I can get that, and um that, you know, we, they will have the opportunity to do so. Um, I'm hoping that they come out with a design that's really cool, I, I'm not an engineer or anything like that, but um i- if it hits all those marks that um. Uh, Director Colt mentioned, I, you know, I'm gonna give a little artistically what to, what would they come up with. Um, I, I think, but absolutely the final decision's up to council, and um this is, again, this is just for the um. Design work, correct? This is design and build. This is end build. Yeah, so it's a dual contract. Excuse me, um, but we will absolutely give the opportunity though for the public and for council to have um a lot of uh um in weigh in on the design, all that, after that's completed.
Fair, yeah, just. I just. I misunderstood what you were saying as well, I thought you were, you meant like, ah, mostly get the design, then get work about that, I kind of. I misunderstood.
Any other further discussion? All right, there has been a motion, it's been seconded, um, we're, we're discussing the Skoli Construction LLC Public Works Contract. I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote, and we'll start with councilmember. Um, Yerney.
Yay.
Councilmember Hess.
Yay.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossman.
No.
Council Richardson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Blair. Motion carries, all right, moving on, thank you. Um, for cool, and also moving on to item D sixty, confirmation appointments to the City of Yom Advisory Boards and Commissions. Kathy, do you wanna, you wanna discuss this, or?
This is similar to what we've done in the past, so we've had um some boards and commission terms that expired actually at the end of the year. And we advertised in December, in January, on our social media pages, on our websites, um and posted notices at city hall. And we received eighteen applications, and so the process for once we receive the applications are. The mayor reviews the, our, we first, we send them to the staff. Um, for those committees, and they review the applications, make a recommendation, and then the mayor. Reviews the applications, considers the staff recommendations, so he's made the appointments to. We have two terms on the planning commission, one on the arts commission, one parks advisory committee, and one on the police advisory committee.
Questions? All righty. Um, yeah, councilmember McCrossman.
Um. I think I know where this question. Um, so we're to confirm people we haven't met or know anything about, that's what you're asking.
The, the names um. Wh- what, what's been sent out?
The mayor makes the appointments, yes, and you're confirming his appointments, just as we've done for all the other appointments for boards and commissions. We've never held.
What's the point of the council approving, why would the council have to approve this?
Checks and balance.
Part of our municipal code, so we're required to have you confirm the appointment.
It's part of the code, but it's more for the checks and balances, if I chose, if I want to stack the deck, let's say, with people that are supporters of mine, or for some reason I like.
I'm saying, yeah, that, that's exactly what could happen, cuz, okay, who are these people? Are we not going to question them, or ask them, or know anything about them, I don't know.
If council, I mean, subject council.
That's kind of what kind of asking, like, okay, what's the point of doing this if? If not a process that the council's involved in. It just seems kind of.
Your main purpose, cuz we're just following our code. Um, council wants to change the code, you're more than welcome to change it, so I can just make appointments um without council approval. Councilmember Richardson and Blair.
So, uh, I think I heard you stated, there's a, a li- a term limit for these positions?
Correct.
Healthy.
They're all four-year terms.
Four-year terms, and so, uh, okay, just wanna make sure, and so for the arts commission, Stephanie, she's gonna be head chair of that? Or?
Excuse me?
For uh the arts commission, I'm reading here.
Yeah, these aren't for the chair, no, it's, it's just for.
The servant, yeah.
Oh, just serving on these things.
Correct.
Okay, so this isn't like appointed. Uh, people in charge.
No, it's members of these um committees and um commissions, or they're all, yeah, committees and commissions. Councilmember Blair, excuse me. All right, any other questions? Comments? Looking for. Councilor. We'll go Hess because he. Councilmember Blair.
Uh, just. Correct, people, these same names have been on these committees already, correct?
Um, I don't think they've.
Some of them are new, some of them are um renewing their terms.
Okay. I recognize a couple of them.
Councilmember Hess.
Like to move that we confirm Mayor DePinto's appointments to the planning commission, art commissioner, parks advisory committee, and police advisory committee. As written.
Is there a second? Second, my councilman Blair, any further discussion? Take a roll call vote on this, councilmember Blair.
Yes.
Council Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossman.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hess.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yay.
Motion carries. Thank you, council, thank you. All right, moving on to old business, unscheduled. Moving on to scanning committee reports, start with public safety committee.
No meeting.
Yeah, that was quick, council. We'll move on to public services committee.
Uh, for public service, uh, we. As Director Colt presented the stage contract, which we discussed and voted on, uh, so looking forward to that, thank you, Director Colt, for that. Uh, we also had a discussion about the master plan community. Uh, for the Tohoma Terra, not for the other half that isn't being developed, but the one that is. Um, they. The gist of the meeting is that uh they are wanting to make. Changes to what was agreed upon with the original uh plan, uh, they wanted to. Reduce the size of the commercial slash retail property, our planet, our planning department is working very closely with them. Uh, I wanna commend them for, you know. I wanna, it's not pushing back, but saying, hey, no, what we need to find a compromise, uh, I.
Your thoughts on it?
I think we, we need the retail and the commercial space, I would like. My opinion is that I would like to see them possibly look at how like DuPont has done where. Two levels of apartments, which we have already done the clearing for, we've written the code for, and have some retail space. So that we can bring in more physical therapy, uh daycare, variety of other businesses, retail shops that. The communities in need of, uh, from the discussion. Um, there is, and Councilman Crossman, you can correct me on this, they are through their brokerage. Uh, firm, they're not, they're not able to find businesses to come in, and so they're wanting to have. People's sign in advance before they. Reach the footprint of the retail and commercial. Uh, but as I said, the uh planning department is. They're looking out for the city's interests. Um, they're kind of aligned with, we do need that retail and commercial, and I think it's important that we look at that because we as a community. Uh. From what I've heard all last year from the planning department. We have businesses that wanna come, there just is nowhere for them to go, there's no development, there's nothing there, so. It's kind of important that we be aware of that, um, and I recommend for the uh council that you take a look at that, cuz this is gonna come before us at some point. If we take a look, uh, reach out to Director Colt if necessary to get what information's going on. Cuz this is gonna come before us, and I think it's a very important discussion that we have. Uh, Director Colt, were you gonna bring this up at a study session in the future, I couldn't remember?
I will if they, they push farther.
Okay.
At that point where it could come to council, it would come to a study session.
Thank you. Uh, other than that, that's uh all I have to say for, for the public service.
Councilor, Councilor, uh, finance committee.
No meeting.
All right. On moving on to mayor, city administrator, staff reports.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates, uh, one's a very exciting one is, City of Yom is one of the hundred and twelve Association of Washington Cities Trust members. That earned the twenty twenty-three Well City Distinction. Uh, this is by making outstanding commitment to employee health, each twenty twenty-three Well City recipient will receive a two percent premium discount. On their AWC Employee Benefit Trust Active Medical premiums in twenty twenty-four. This equates to approximately.
I'll say forty-five thousand.
Equates to approximately forty-five thousand in premium savings in twenty twenty-four. Um, this is obviously all, all in due to Karen and Shelby in our HR department for making this possible, so. Great job, uh, Karen and her staff.
Just to go off of that real fast, we got that in twenty twenty-two, correct?
Yes, true activities of twenty twenty.
You did not have that in twenty twenty-one?
No, we didn't get it for this year.
Twenty twenty-three, so we got it in twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, excuse me.
So this year will be for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, beautification, LTAC funding requests are due this Friday, and we've had a few more trickle in recently. Um, the new decorative lights in the downtown central business district have been purchased and will be delivered in the April timeframe. Um, and then from the police department, they.
Can you go back, I know there's a lot of councilmembers, they had concerns on the downtown area, you, you kind of, and maybe that's a Cody question. About the timing on that, um, about the. We got purchasing, uh, when they're gonna be put up and all that, and there was also a comment from a local business owner, I think, about. Um, the um concrete thing sticking up or structure, could you discuss that briefly, Cody? Yeah, so we ordered, as you guys may remember, we ordered a bunch of lights uh for the downtown quarter, those decorative lights, these are ones we own, the only lights in town that we own versus PSE. Um, we ordered those the end of January, beginning of February, it was a ninety-day lead time, um, I have got confirmation that they're in production, and they should be done by April. Ideally earlier, she thinks it'll be earlier, but let's not get our hopes up, and we'll just shoot for that ninety-day timeframe. Once they're in, it's a quick installation, we, our own guys do it, we don't have to wait for a company or anything, we'll do it ourselves, so. We'll go with Councilmember Blair than Hess.
We're putting like streetlights with the Edison bulbs.
No, streetlights, like, so the decorative streetlights with those giant two bulbs on them, we're putting yellow, we're sort of, there's like four that are out on the main street, if you've been down Main Street. We're just, those ones are too old, we're replacing them with brand new ones, we'll leave the ones in place that work, and we'll continue the lights going down all the way to the movie theater. So that's the idea, is we'll continue going down, and we'll own those lights, so we don't have to wait for nine months for PSE to change out a light for a streetlight. Councilmember Hess.
Director Colt already covered what I was gonna, wanna clarify.
Okay, any other questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, uh, chief administrator.
Last thing I had was the uh, from the police department, uh, they are busy doing background on three potential new hires, one entry and two laterals. So, news on that front.
Any, any questions for? Councilmember Hess.
Uh, and it's just uh to recall, when we have a lateral transfer, it saves us money cuz we don't have to. Uh, put them through the academy, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, um, the only thing that I have to announce is that we got back on the, um, there's an EDC, the Economic Development Council. Um, they were, they voted us back on, um, it's pretty big that we're, we're back on that board, so. Um, this was approved by council in the last agenda, or last agenda, last um budget. Um, is a ten thousand annual cost. Um, but other than that, it's, I think it's gonna be some big benefits, there'll be, um, as well as. Producing, um, besides attracting businesses and all that, industry in Yom, they'll also be writing a report for us annually, um. They did that in the past, um, so yeah, looking forward to that, any questions on any of that? All right, moving on, and I would like to remind you or ask councilmembers, it's, it's your time to do, you know, talk about what, but I would. Ask that you um try to stay with your um council duties or city related stuff, um, if possible. All right. You don't want to, Councilmember Larry, go ahead. All right, then Council Richardson.
I do have a SWAC meeting tomorrow morning, uh, that I will attend, have, happen. And I enjoyed a good time at a PTL Harvard Forest. Or a good, good uh Chamber City thing, it was a city thing.
City?
It was like, uh, you know, cuz Ashley was there. Community. Unity, thank you for throwing a good party.
What was the actual event?
Oh, it was a drive five oh seven for Chambers, yes, thank you, drive five oh seven for the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, he was hosting, and we had catered by Still Bear BBQ and uh. And, and five oh seven was, yeah. Stick to the city, though, Josh.
Yeah, yeah. Is that all, Council Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Crossman.
All right, um. So this explanation on my no votes this evening, not because I'm against these things, it's just some of the principle of. How it came to be is what I'm really against, not that I'm against any of that, just wanna make that clarification. And then, yeah, just have public services committee today, and more will come from that later, so.
All right.
Yeah, and I don't need to talk about change of stuff.
Thank you, Councilor Crossman, Councilmember Smith.
Didn't have any meetings, um, I did have a, a person from Lacey reach out to me because her and her husband purchased a roller skating rink three years ago. That is, that was being torn down. They have all of the wood, all of the skates, all the concessions, and she. She's like, we wanna put it in Yale, but I'm like, so I, you know, she explained everything to me, I, you know, I, I did, I explained, you know, we just started with. In talks with the YMCA, not that they have that, but she was talking about recreation for kids. Um, but anyway, I just said that I would put that out there, um. So if anybody is listening and wants, has some land and wants a roller skating rink, I can hook you up.
Fair enough, yeah, all right, thank Council Smith, Councilmember Hess.
Uh, inner-city transit authority, the executive, chief executive officer, she is retiring, so they're going to be doing a search for a new. Um, individual, uh, she has been with ITA for twenty, I think it's twenty years, she has seen everything go and. Uh, she's leaving with uh the ITA in good hands. Uh, they are on budget, they're looking really good for adhering to the uh proposal. Proposition that was passed in reference to a fee being raised, uh. As you know, uh, we are one of the very few transit authorities that does not collect a fee, you can just jump on the bus and go. Um, and I'm in the process of trying to learn about some more things to present to some of our local community. Consider how possibly get uh. Either free or low-cost uh charter service to be able to go and do things within the community for uh. Well, so I'm trying to get some. well, so I'm trying to get some clarification on that. Uh, also, uh, they are still looking for drivers as well as staff personnel and mechanics. If anybody is interested, it's a local, you can just jump on bus ninety-four, go to work. Uh, kind of thing. Hey, it's there.
Yeah.
Uh, the, uh, Regional Housing Commission, uh, as you know, uh, we will, the study sessions, when you.
Yeah.
Yeah. The study session, uh, they have come up with a new amendment. It's going to be, uh, brought up during the study session. I the gist of it is, and I know it's probably going to be the word wrong wording. We're not going to be like King County. They're just trying to do like what King County has done of getting a centralized actual organization that's going to run the, uh, housing, uh, commission to, instead of, to a board that we don't really say anything. So they're going to try to consolidate it, get it so that it works well, and we will discuss that more during the study session, and I will have more notes and everything to go with that.
Yeah, before council gets all up in arms about it, it's, it's by R C W that we belong to this group, we pay um, V's two and all that tax company, tax holders too, as well as, um, there's going to be a big explanation at council, um, at that study session.
And as I said, I will make sure that I get as much information so that all questions can be answered for, by the council members. Uh, but as I said, it's, it's, it's lessons learned from King County. So we're not going to be like King County. We've a lot of lessons learned, but centralizing, getting it so that, uh, when funds go in, they get distributed appropriately and a little bit more fairly in the future.
It's not a huge amendment from what I've seen on it.
But I just, uh, yeah, no, it's important to give for that.
Absolutely.
Um, and other than that, nothing else to report at this time.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Hess. Councilor Brooks.
I'd like to say that I feel like it's a personal attack about sticking to the city, um, because I always come really long, but I'm really long because I'm representing the city at every event that I attend. So here I go. Um, most recently ongoing right now is an emergency warming center where we are keeping homeless men and women safe in the community center right over there. Um, and that's been going on for almost a week now. Uh, because of the cold blue, I'll say because of the cold blue with the, uh, urgency, extreme weather. Uh, then the steady meeting, that's one of my responsibilities. It was held at Rainier. And at that meeting, they just highlighted programs that Rainier holds and that they plan to hold along with, um, ten I know was highlighted a lot too, because they're doing a lot of things right now, like their banner program. Um, then, uh, the community resource fair, where we had representation from the police. And that was in the form of Sergeant Sparkle handing out gun locks. All that showed up were dispersed. There were no, none left over. It was fantastic. Again, great attendance. Um, even though there was weather issues, that was when it was really bad, uh, outside of Yom, the snow globe of Yom. Um, yeah, there's a lot more that I've done that I'm not going to talk about.
Just to clarify on, um, for Brooks, um, it's not a shelter. It's just a, um, okay.
I didn't say the S word. No.
Gotcha. Yeah, just during extreme cold weather, it's open for, uh, the night, uh, third parties, um, who have that one's it. Sanitize in the morning. I think it's been helping out a lot for some of the, um, local, um, things.
Thank you for that, yes.
All righty. Any other questions, comments before we go into, um, executive session? All right. So what we have is a thirty-minute executive session, uh, discuss legal also potential legal litigation is allowed by R C W four two point three zero point one one zero one I, and for the consideration of site selection or acquisition of real estate for R C W four two point three zero point one one zero one B. Um, we'll be in executive session, uh, for exactly thirty minutes. Why is my math so bad? All right. So it's six fifty-three, seven, one.
Twenty-three.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, all right.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that you weren't online, that's why you didn't mail that.
I, I had another.
Oh, three, two, three, nine meetings.
Alright, I call the regular meeting back to order. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
No adjourn.
Okay.
Say aye.
Aye.
Good meeting.